Is everybody here?
Yeah, we have a quorum though.
Okay. Yeah, we do.
We're not coming.
Everyone that I know of.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 5th meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Certainly Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord. Expected Mayor Dixon.
Here.
City Council Member and Secretary Bavacqua.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin. Expected Commissioner Gosson. Commissioner Hauser.
I'm here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Stone.
They're they're logging in.
Okay.
We have a we have a quorum. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Gasin here.
Thank you.
Is that it? Everybody's checked in?
Yeah, Patty's here and so and Eric is now.
Great. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and giving the pledge tonight will be Sienna Hall.
Oh, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, yeah. Just for the benefit of the public watching us on TV, you may have noticed that at the state and local government levels, there's a lot of wrangling, I'll call it, about whether or not it's the appropriate time to restart the meetings in public and the and the burden of the law that votes only be taken in public. And I believe the state at the state level, they let the executive order expire, allowing the public meetings to be waived. But it looks like they allowed a allowed the chief executive, in this case, our mayor of the city, to declare an emergency such that it would allow us to continue to meet remotely. And Mayor Vicson did that for us. And as a result of that, we're here tonight again. And we were just talking ahead of time for all of you on the public, we really would prefer. I mean, most of us are pretty conscientious about this stuff. We would prefer that remote meetings remain in place for just a bit longer until things get a little more settled on the vaccine and herd immunity front out there in the public. But for now, we are meeting in virtual fashion. And again, any votes taken at this meeting count and will be officially entered into the record. You'll see a phone number as always at the bottom of the screen. And any members of the public who wish to comment on anything actually, but specifically the items on the agenda. If you would call that number, you will immediately be connected with Sienna. And at the appropriate time, she will connect you live to the meeting in progress. And you'll be able to make your comments or ask us questions or whatever the case may be. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to call number four. I should ask you, Sienna, any other public comments, items not on the agenda?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Number four is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting to March 1st, 2021. And I'd ask the commissioners if you've in fact had enough time to review these. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, corrections? And if not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. By the mayor, do we have support?
Second.
Who is that?
It's Christian Hauser.
Thank you, Christian.
You're welcome.
Moved and supported. Any other comments? The roll call.
Dixon.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Clark Martin.
Yes.
Gosson.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lord.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
Don't believe Stone is here.
Yes, I am.
I joined.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. The next item, number five, is review and discussion regarding the updated sustainability worksheet. As you know, we have had this in place now for, I think it's going on three years. And we continually look for ways to improve it, upgrade it, et cetera, et cetera. Remember, our intention here was to try to come up with a tool that we could use to, we'll say, quantitatively measure the impact that proposed developments would have on the city. And it's it's worked really quite well. I think John Jackson is here tonight for McKenna. And John is going to lead us in this discussion in terms of considering further changes. John?
Thank you, Chairman McGee. Actually, Vidya is going to lead us through the discussion. And I'm here as backup. So I'm here to answer any any other question.
Okay, Vidya, we didn't see you. Glad you're here with us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Members of the Commission. As you summarized, the sustainability evaluation worksheet was adopted by the township in early 2018. And it was basically to provide the city with a tool that would help review all of these new projects based on specific standards. It was the first of its kind that we had designed and one of the it was a very novel creation adopted by the city of Rochester. And as a means, any new study, it does require tweaks at time in order to make it perfect. Over the years, while discussing it, questions came about based on the 20 indicators that were there on the worksheet as to whether it was fair to apply the worksheet as written with one point for each indicator, irrespective of whether the project was residential or non-residential or whether it was located in the downtown or not. And based upon that, we came up with a revised worksheet which had different scoring indicators. I will share my screen. The revised worksheet that we prepared. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
So it was separated into two categories, impacting DDA and not impacting DDA. And based upon where the project was placed, the points assigned were different. It reached anywhere from just one point, from point five, half a point, anywhere up to two points if that particular indicator was of greater significance based upon the site's location. The Planning Commission in March of 2020, just before the pandemic hit, had asked us to evaluate all previously approved projects based on this new evaluation score sheet, try and see how they would fare. And it was pretty revealing. We saw that some projects did better and a couple of them did not score as many points on this new indicator sheet. The Planning Commission did have a couple of questions for me at the time. You were happy at the way the worksheet turned out. Couple of questions you had was, how exactly is the school impact indicator? If you take a look at school impact number 13, it basically said, how do you evaluate a project for this for these points? And the second question you had was, if a developer picked a site that already had the sidewalks, new sidewalks and infrastructure in place, so there's really nothing left to upgrade. In that case, how do they get points for, say, non-motorized infrastructure, creating of new sidewalks or pipe maintenance or pipe condition? Are you penalizing them for picking a site that is good? So you had asked me to give you answers to these two indicators. At the same time, the city was going out for bids for the new master plan and the sustainability evaluation took a backseat. At this point of time, we believe it's a good time to bring it back before you and move it to the next step. So with regard to an explanation for school impact, John is here tonight because John was part of the original study team that actually put together this evaluation, the background data for it, and decided the baseline indicators based upon which the points are scored. So I'll defer to John to explain how school impact and good site points would be awarded to projects so that new worksheet that you have is equitable for all new projects and developers.
Thank you, Vidya. So with respect to the school indicator, the plan identified two indicators for schools. Number one, that that the city would continue to generate and maintain its the number of children that attended schools in Rochester School District. That was one of the indicators. And that obviously is it's sort of a circular indicator. The better the school district is, the more likely you're going to attract reinvestment in single-family homes, which is the primary generator of schoolchildren, obviously. The other indicator was how much revenue is generated, how much property tax revenue is generated locally that goes into the kitty for the school district. And we understand that the money doesn't go directly to the school district. But the indicator that we came up with in this scoring sheet is that if a development results in an increase of over 5% in property taxes, then it was determined that that contribution to the school district in general, the school fund, would be larger than the costs that were generated by the development by the school district. In other words, it would it would exceed the the number of children. It would more than pay for the number of children being generated by the development. So that's kind of how we sort of blended those two indicators together. The number of children being generated for the school district and how much revenue was being generated by the school district. So the indicator again is if a development results in an increase of 5% or more in property taxes and the property is already generating, then that would be a positive impact on the school district.
And it would be worth up to one point?
Yes, well, in some cases up to two points.
Okay. How could it end up as a half a point?
Well, we identified it being a half a point for a mixed-use development, half a point for a residential development in the DDA and a half a point for mixed and half a point for residential in the non-DDA area as well. And one point for non-residential development, which is strictly a commercial office or some development like that. And two points for that same type of development outside the DDA. So basically, if it's either a residential development or mixed use, it's going to generate some amount of school-aged children, some degree. It might be very small depending on the nature of the project. So that's how we were able to reduce it to a point five. Whereas opposed to, you know, a commercial development, office development, we gave them more points because it was going to contribute, you know, a higher higher benefit to the school district.
Because they don't get the homestead waiver.
Correct.
They pay.
Yeah, and they don't generate any cost to the school district either because they don't have any, you know, there's no children usually associated with commercial or industrial office development.
Okay.
So the the other indicator that came up with some questions had to do with infrastructure. Things like the addition of water and sewer, the replacement of water and sewer, the replacement of at-risk pipes, pipes that are older, aging or too small. So this indicator really talks about not extending the system to accommodate new development. So that's one of the indicators. It talks about a 2% increase. So the idea there is that new developments shouldn't result in expanding the system that needs to be maintained and paid for over years. The other indicators have to do with how much of the at-risk pipes are being replaced and and upgraded. So the indicators here, we talk about a site being in a good location or being penalized for being in a good location. The fact of the matter is that any new development, even if there is existing infrastructure there, will most likely have to upgrade its connections, upgrade aspects of the of the utility system so that the new development won't generate an extensive impact on that. The other indicator that we talked about was sidewalks. Now, as far as sidewalks go, as I said in the memo that we put together, the idea would be that any new development would would fill in any gaps in the sidewalk system to provide continuity in the public sidewalk system. Now, if it's going into a location where there's already public sidewalk provided, then in terms of the indicator, we would look to make sure that that there was access within the site that connected to the public sidewalk system. And we would look for something that was more than just a bare minimum five-foot-wide sidewalk with barrier-free ramps. We would want to make sure that the sidewalks were sufficient, the same quality and provided the same quality of pedestrian experience that you do on the public sidewalks, especially in the commercial areas in Rochester, the downtown and things like that. So that might result in a developer having to provide wider sidewalks. It might require a developer having to provide some pedestrian amenities along the sidewalk and things of that nature to make sure that that walkability infrastructure meshed well with what the city itself has already invested in. So it's kind of a long-winded explanation, but that's that's kind of how we approach the infrastructure.
Okay, the study is before you tonight. Those were the only two questions the Planning Commission had previously expressed. Otherwise, you have seen this revised worksheet before you multiple times and it has been fine-tuned based upon the feedback received from the Commission. So what we are looking for you from you today is if you feel satisfied that your questions and concerns are answered and if you're comfortable, the next step would be to pass this on to City Council that were adopted as a policy. And henceforth, we would apply this amended worksheet for all new projects that are coming through rather than the old.
So questions for John or Vidya from the Commission?
This is.
This is this is Christian. I don't know if this is necessarily a question but a comment. And maybe I could help out a little bit. As I think I mentioned this before, I actually was on the the committee when this was first developed. So I'm pretty familiar with obviously the concept and the intent, et cetera. And it was always my understanding when this was done, when we came up with this, which was a really good process. I think everyone felt that it was going to be subject to some modifications. It was dynamic and it was, you know, conceived in the sense that, hey, listen, this is a great starting point. But after it's implemented, there's certainly going to be some, you know, things that we want to change, good and bad. And so I would, I would, you know, certainly suggest and say that in terms of whether or not changes to the sustainability review were contemplated, I would say 100%. So, you know, if there's anyone on the fence about, oh, I don't know if we should mess with this. Clearly, when we were doing this, that was anticipated that there were going to be modifications to this review process. And I'm all in favor of it. I think it's a good document. And certainly, I think it served the purpose. But as with most things, you can always make it better and tweak it to how experience has been. So I'm all in favor of it.
Okay. Other comments? My my question's more for the mayor and Dean. I'm curious how how this is received at the City Council level when a development comes forward from the Planning Commission that needs their approval. How do they? How do they view this? Do they seem? Do they all seem to grasp what the intent is here and see it as a valuable contribution to the development decision?
Go ahead, Dean.
Think, you know, I think they appreciate any sort of direction and data that they can get from the Planning Commission. This document helps put things into context, I think, for for folks that aren't, you know, involved to the degree that we are throughout the process at the Planning Commission. But yeah, I mean, I know from my personal perspective, I think it's great that we're making the effort. There is some value to this. I've always said that I I hope that it would be a little more extensive, that it would give us some direction when we want to look at multiple projects coming at us at the same time and how layering them one on top of the other might impact, you know, certain things within our our community, stress on the infrastructure, stress on our first responders. I don't I don't think that this tool necessarily got us there. Discussions I've had with council, I feel like some people are probably somewhat on board with that, but 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 they still see the value. So that's my perspective.
I I do see the value in particular when we went through the riverfront thing because we required that that developer to go back and quantitatively include the impacts that were already there from, I don't know, what were the other projects? It was Cedar Brook and Vidya. What were the other ones? But we did make them add that into their calculation.
It was blossom bells. I think this study really showed what effect it had in getting Rochester a project that was truly sustainable. For example, the Riverfront project, when it was first proposed before the city, the first time it came before the Planning Commission, it scored eight out of 20 indicators and the project was deemed as non-sustainable. They went back four times to mitigate the project and each time they made improvements in terms of their infrastructure contribution, the green canopy that they were providing on the site, acquiring additional land in order to make sure it was not just a building and did not have more assets. They steadily worked towards it. Took them four revisions, four attempts to actually bring it all the way from eight to 20 to 16 points on 20, which definitely made it a sustainable project based on the scoring indicator. I think without this, for the Planning Commission to try and negotiate a better project with Riverfront would have been difficult because you would not have had a basis for requesting the change. Whereas this provided you with a basis to say, your project is not sustainable because you simply don't meet the criteria. It actually spurred the developer to come up with a much better product and a project for the city.
I think the important thing there is that that developer and others have come forward and leaped to the understanding that they had to meet this. They didn't want to argue about it. It was there and they started right away with trying to satisfy us. So in terms of coming up with quantitative data, something you could hold in your hands, I think it's proven itself to be very valuable.
Yeah, Mr. Mitch.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I would agree with Dean on this is that I think it's a good tool. Everybody now expects to see it. It's something we look at. It's actually interesting is now that the I believe the developer actually now uses, if they get a good score, they actually use that as a
bragging.
As a bragging sales tool. You know, but I guess, you know, I mean, the only other comment I'd have is we, you know, it seems like we're always looking for something to quantitatively make decisions. And of course, it's it always is ends up being somewhat subjective. So this is never going to be perfect where you can just fill in the Excel spreadsheet and kick out the perfect answer. But I think it's a good tool. And as Christian said, it's a it's a living document, something we can always work to improve.
Very good. So Vidya, again, what what do you need from the Commission tonight?
A motion from the Planning Commission, please, to send it over to City Council for adoption.
Okay. Is anyone ready to make that motion?
This is this is Christian. I'll make that motion. Yep, I'd like to make a motion to have this matter go up to City Council.
Okay. And who is this supporter?
Port.
Who is that? David?
David. It was Mr. Gasson.
Thank you, David. So it's been moved and supported to send this forward to the City Council for adoption. Any other discussion? And could we have the roll call?
Yes, Hauser?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much, John and Vidya, for the presentation.
Thank you. It was nice seeing everyone again.
Okay, next we have item number six. Consideration of amendments slash revisions to the originally approved site plan for facade renovations for the Gateway Center located at 103125 South Main Street. Vidya, are you handling this one?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from Ari Caesar and Pam Becker of Eden Property Group, who are the owners of the Gateway Center. As you know, the site is located on the west side of Main Street, in First and Second Streets in the Central Business District. Now, this plan originally received approval from the Planning Commission on August 5th of 2019. At the time of approval, it was presented that this building, it was discovered during some exploratory demolition that the building house is she booked factory from around 1920 to the late 1950s. The applicant and the city got hold of a copy of a historical photograph from the 1970 archives that revealed the original building, how it looked with a medallion. And the applicant at the time revised their proposal and got approval for a facade renovation that showed the restoration of the original historic brickwork and limestone with the building medallion, addition of a metal screen panel on top of the whole building and also quite a dark background for sign placement and suspended metal awnings above the window and door opening. Now, the West facade was to have a large painted wall mural, the design for which was not finalized at the time. And the renovated facade featured no ephesus whatsoever. Subsequently, the applicant reappeared before you in January of this year, seeking to amend the approved facade. What the applicant stated at the time was that during demolition, they discovered that stone end caps that seemed to be signature of this gateway building, at least for the past few decades. Now, those stone piers are not in good condition, which is causing the wall to lean. That resulted in the stone actually being needed to be removed. Now, the applicant's architect showed a rendering proposing the use of something called vinyl cement or hardywood materials with a wood-like appearance. Planning Commission did discuss the project in detail, but they weren't too interested in the wood appearing material. It did not meet the standards of what we would expect for something that is a gateway into the downtown area. And they asked applicant to consider a few alternatives for these end caps. The applicant at the time also mentioned that they intended to appear before you at a future date or changing their awning style. So the Planning Commission directed the applicant, go back, decide what in all you want changed or amended for whatever reason, and come back with a comprehensive amended facade approval application. At this time, the applicant is before you and the changes include installation of cast stone veneer at the end caps in a gray color. If we could just have the facade elevations on the screen, you know, is that something you could share or the applicant's architect could just put up on the screen? So.
The architect can put that on the screen. He's actually on the line.
Is that Mike?
Yep.
Mike, could you please just share the facade elevation so the Planning Commission can follow along?
I don't have that in front of me. I was hoping you guys could share. I'm kind of remotely right now.
Okay.
Let me see if I can dig it up.
This is Ari Caesar. I can pull it up and show you if you'd like.
Oh, Ari, you can go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Put up the facade on there. So the applicant is proposing installation of cast stone veneer on the end caps, but currently they have that stone in gray color, engraving gateway center on the two end walls with a stone cap, installation of a plaque describing the history of the building at both ends as was previously required when the original site plan was granted in 2019. That was one of the conditions of approval. So that's being installed at this time. Replacement of the suspended metal awnings with a fabric canopy awnings that you see on the plans in front of you. The mural is not included at this time, but we just want a clarification whether it's proposed or not. So the proposed change of building materials, actually this revised elevation proposed by the applicant is pretty attractive. The stone type of material that they are proposing is much more in keeping with the architecture of the building than the previous hardywood wood appearing material that they were proposing. The addition of the plaque also enhances the historic character of the building. The addition of the plaque also enhances the historic character of the building. The front facade will continue to have the Yates Machine Factory's medallion and original brick that is on there. We believe the changes in materials proposed at this time is not going to detract from the historical nature of the building and will create an attractive entrance into the downtown. So based on our review of the proposal, we are recommending granting of amended facade approval for the gateway center based on the image that you see on the screen at this time. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I'm sure the applicant and the architect would walk the planning commission through whatever change just they are proposing.
So, uh, any questions for Vidya at this point?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question.
Go ahead, David.
Has lighting, exterior lighting changed at all through the course of several modifications or suggestions and change?
I have not seen the lighting changed, Commissioner Gasson. The wall-mounted decorative lantern-style fixtures are the same as was originally proposed. I believe there is lighting on the underside of the fabric awnings, but those light fixtures are not visible. The applicant originally did have a photograph of the site with illumination after dark. I'm not sure if that is part of this packet. Maybe they can clarify that too.
There is not, uh, the, the evening image is not part of this, uh, package, um, just a daytime image, but the, uh, the lighting has not changed from the original submission.
Thank you very much. Uh, I do, I did recall what you mentioned, Vidya, with night vision some sort of li- light source against the signage panels, but no visibility of the lights themselves, just the illumination against the backdrop there. Wanted to make sure that hasn't changed.
Is that correct, Ari? It has not changed?
The only, uh, difference between this and the previous submission is this limestone wall and the, uh, switch from metal canopies to fabric shed awnings.
Thank you. Any other questions for, uh, either Vidya at this point, Ari as well?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one more question. Material, it was described as stone. Could, could you provide a better description of what that is? I, I see something that looks like two different textures in this image here.
I'm happy to answer that if, if, uh, you'd like. So, um, this is a, uh, man-made limestone. The reason why it looks a little bit different on the bottom, uh, was just to, uh, I guess illustrate, uh, we're going to be using a starter course that is real limestone, which is, uh, um, more weather resistant to, you know, salt water and erosion on the bottom, but aesthetically, you won't notice any difference between this starter course and the remainder of the wall. So, uh, this is a three quarters inch, uh, thick man-made limestone material with a starter course of, uh, real limestone that will be more weather resistant.
Excellent. Thank you. Could you also say the dimension of the face of those things is four inch thick, I, if I understood right, but what's the face size of that? Does that look like twelve inches by two feet or something?
I'd have to refer to my notes. I don't have that in front of me.
David, you mean the black or the simulated black sizes?
Yes, exactly. It doesn't look like or call it typical masonry sizes. Maybe that's because it's stone or simulated stone. Just to understand more precisely what size those things are.
If I may, it, it states on the last sheet that the veneer is twelve by twenty-four.
Excellent. Thank you, Patty.
Yeah.
That is correct, if I may. Twelve by twenty-four.
Vidya, is this, um, uh, real limestone base sufficiently noted for you in the plan here?
Yes, it, it looks like the difference between score, it generally when you use any of a masonry product based upon the texture of the surface, it gives a marginal difference, but I think what Ari mentioned that the base coat is considered like original limestone in order to provide more durability, especially when in winter salt is used on the parking lot or the snow melts and the snow is banked against it. I believe the distinction made is, is pretty clear. If you look at the stone end caps on top, you can see that there is another narrower band of stone shown over there. So top of the cap is also going to look slightly different, but I think the distinction is there to see.
Vidya, do the stone end caps that you just pointed out exist or are they being added to to tie in the, uh, the revised, uh, veneer cast stone look?
I, I think they are building the whole thing. All of it is being added. The previous one was just the big, uh, facade stones, like surface stones. And here the cap has been created. You know, it's all part of this limestone wall. Replaced existing stone wall.
Do the, uh, the corner highlights in that square box, uh, coming out from protruding out from the brick exist? Or are we adding those to add some character?
Oh, that's a good question. Ari, um, just right next to the black fabric awning, the corner that is on the other side. On the other side, yes. Is that existing or are you adding that force of limestone in at this time?
I believe that, uh, this limestone is original to, uh, the building. What, what about the four end pieces above that silver duran, uh, silver Dodge Journey? You got the two doors, you got the silver car. Above that is a square box. Are we adding the, the corners or are those just light reflections that are? Are you talking about here? No.
No, the edges of the square, the four tiny white squares. I think that is just a detailing commissar stone. Yes.
Oh, uh, this is already, uh, finished being built. I don't know if, uh, if, if this is there right now or not, but the, all of this is already in, uh, this is already built out. This is already here. Right. So we don't know if the corners are actually limestone or if your architect was just having fun with lighting effects? That's correct. Okay.
Uh, this is Joe from Design House. Those are, those are limestone, uh, to match uh, the existing little limestone details that are on the front of the building, the existing facade. And those are supposed to be the limestone details to kind of tie into that existing, existing details.
So those would be added to Joe after tonight if we approve them?
Yeah. So those were part of the original approval. Those, those haven't changed. That was part of the original site plan approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, uh, just so I understand, the veneer that's been, being put on there, the limestone will attach to those two existing concrete block walls that we see right now?
That's correct.
And by adhesive or anchorage? Is it just adhesive?
It's a, yeah, this is Joe again. Uh, yeah, it's a masonry adhesive. It's a, it's a grout. It's called laticrete. Uh, it's a, an adhesive grout that attaches the limestone to the existing CMU walls.
Thank you. Any other questions for, uh, either the staff or, um, the petitioner? I, I guess I'd just like to, uh, make a quick comment. I, I wanted to, uh, uh, thank the petitioner for, uh, you know, making the effort to, um, bring us something that, uh, looks in my opinion to be a little more in line with what we are hoping for. And, uh, I appreciate that. Thanks.
You're welcome.
So Vidya, tell us again what you need us to do?
It's before planning commission tonight for granting of amended site plan approval. So you would make a motion to approve the amended facade for the gateway center.
Okay. Dean, would you like to make that motion?
So moved.
And is there support?
Port.
So it's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? And we'll have the roll call.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Ari, um, I just want to tell you, uh, thanks for your patience and with us. And, uh, thanks for going the long mile. I think if this is built to look this way, I think it's beautiful.
I'm really, uh, pleased with the end result and I look forward to, uh, completing the project.
Very good. Thanks for coming. Okay, we have now number eight. This is a presentation on seasonal summer use interest for Rochester Play located at three eighty East Second Street. Vidya?
Chairman McGee, I believe this is a presentation by the owners of Rochester Play. And, um, Jeff Schmanek, he is part of Rochester Play. So Jeff is here to make a presentation on the concept that they are looking to put forth. So this is merely a presentation of the concept. We haven't reviewed it formally yet. The applicant is seeking feedback from the planning commission and based on your feedback, they will submit a formal plan for.
Nick, I see that you are here. Are there any, uh, comments you'd like to make before the petitioner comes forward?
Right. So last year, actually, when COVID first hit us before last summer, Jeff and I met and we talked about what potential things he could do to survive. What expected to be a long haul and got late in the season, we never really got off the ground. So Jeff contacted me about a month ago and we talked again and he's got, um, a nice presentation where he's trying to accommodate his users. Um, it's a temporary use. I think, um, the owner, I think, uh, he's met with the owner of the property and I think it's worth us hearing it out. And then because ZBAs can't grant temporary use experiences anymore, it's a little bit of a weird situation. So we worked with Vidya to come up with what we look to do in the short term. Jeff can talk about what his long-term goals are. There's, um, it's quite an informative presentation.
And this property is part of the, uh, property that includes that building that was a Storm Lake Capital.
Right.
And then the vacant land where the Cedarbrook trailer sat.
Exactly. So that we left the Cedarbrook parking lot, stayed there. They restored the ground. Um, and that, and then, um, Scott Ronan owns the Storm Capital whole complex there. And he's been kind of waiting to see with Jeff what was going to happen on Swally's property, which is still nothing. So, uh, Jeff took an opportunity to see what he could do here temporarily.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, everyone. I would also like to introduce my wife, Kate Schmanek. She's on here as well. So she and I are partners in our business of Rochester Play. Again, thank you for the time to review our desire and plans, if you will, to look at a, um, a seasonal summer outdoor offering is what, uh, we want to position this as. Uh, to enhance, if you will, our current business as we sit today. Ironically, it was almost seven years to the day, uh, when we got, uh, our approval, basically our second approval to move our business to our current location at three eighty East Second Street. So you are correct in the location. Uh, the, the building that we occupy includes the, uh, vacant property, if you will, uh, to the uh, west of us or on the other side of our parking. So that's, uh, part of the same lot, uh, as, as the building exists. The, the building that we are in used to be a warehouse for the Crittenan Hospital, uh, organization. So, uh, again, seven years ago, we converted that to what, uh, the new Rochester Play as we moved from our prior location in the old library building. I'm going to flip over here and share my screen so I can run a presentation if you don't mind. Can everybody see the PowerPoint here as it sits?
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you. As I mentioned, we're looking to introduce, if you will, this, our concept and, and plans to hopefully go forward with, uh, a, a summer offering or seasonal offering of more of an outdoor obstacle play park to complement our current business. Help out, uh, everybody, um, as I mentioned, but seven years ago, uh, so I recognize few faces that are still here, but, uh, many new faces on the mission. I'll give you a little background on our business. Initially, we opened up, uh, in the old library building back in September of twenty ten. And then five years later, uh, basically moved to our, the current location at three eighty East Second Street. We are family owned, have been family owned and still operate the business. We've always received strong customer and community support and tried to return out those favors back to the, 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 the community here in Rochester and the surrounding areas. Until everyone experienced the COVID executive orders last year, we've always experienced positive growth year over year. And that was no, uh, exception to how the year started last year. Both January and February were top, if you will, performing months in, in our business. With March coming along, it forced us to close, which we were closed eight months out of last year. We did have a short reopening, if you will, in late September, uh, but obviously we're forced to close again with the executive orders in mid-November. With reopening towards the end of December, with obviously, uh, restrictions on our offering and our capacity for what we could o- uh, offer. Come this year, uh, starting in February, as one of our uh, offerings includes food service, uh, we were able to establish that again, but still, uh, to this day have capacity restrictions to how we operate. Uh, just to kind of give you an idea, January of this year, we performed just under thirty percent compared to last January. February, we're just under sixty percent. And obviously still operate under limited indoor capacity orders, uh, as we sit today. To help, uh, facilitate, if you will, some of the market need or interest, we expand, we kind of changed our, uh, offering a little bit to what we considered private, uh, visits, uh, which were reservation only with no outside public entrance. Uh, when we first were able to open in September and we still offer that expanded private visit options on Thursday and Sundays with the remaining part of the week, if you will, uh, similar, but, uh, with limited capacity to, uh, open visits, uh, during the day and, uh, evening hours. So what are we here for today and what are we looking to help, ask you guys to help us with? Obviously, we're seeking review, as, uh, was mentioned, directional support and guidance and uh, guiding approval, if you will, to enhance our services with this added outdoor seasonal offering. But with that, uh, intent and, and, and need sought, the idea behind this is to continue our delivery of what we consider more of a premium entertainment, uh, venue uh, for children's play center services. We'd like to increase our summer visitors and I'll talk about that in a minute, uh, to, from a general business, uh, performance with our core offerings. We're not looking to do anything different really than what we do today. Have a place to play. Uh, have people, uh, visit us to conduct parties and provide them food services while they're visiting. Obviously from a business, we look to continue meeting our obligations and protect our interests. And obviously, very importantly, increase the, and replace the lost sales that we've, uh, experienced last year and still today. With this offering, we think this provides and serves kind of that, uh, outdoor safer COVID environment, um, which is also a very desired market, uh, interest with a safe outdoor activity. We look to leverage and utilize the empty lot, which is part of our property as it sits today, the three eighty East Second Street property. And leverage, if you will, some of the Cedarbrook utility hookups, that the parking that Nick mentioned and the sprinklers that were put into place. Our approach, uh, we'd like to start simple, but keep it very professional to, to, to be who we are and with the strategy of the city and, uh, its interest. But with the ability to expand with the need and, and, uh, desire of, of the offering. Some of what, uh, we'd like to show you today are with the features and I'll get into a little bit of an overview. But the primary attraction that we're talking about is an outdoor obstacle play park. What that will consist of is four to seven obstacle-like inflatables for varying ages and effects. Shaded refreshment tents and open area viewing with picnic tables and benches. Along this is with this, we're obviously looking to improve the landscaping. It'll be a fenced-in area. Nicer trees, lawn and mulch to, to make it more appealing. As I mentioned, we're looking to offer, if you will, outdoor parties and utilize our inside amenities for bad weather backup as we do today. Mentioned this as a seasonal use. We're only looking to do this from May through October. It's a warm weather offering to complement our business today. Additionally, the inside use will continue for air-conditioned play. We do parties inside. We have the restrooms. We do our food, all our food and drink preparation. And as I mentioned, you know, we utilize the indoor space for backup party locations if somebody wanted to do something on our patio. We'd like to consider enhancing some of our food and drink. One thing we do offer is like dipping dots inside. So we'd like to provide you know, food offerings or be able to eat outside. And we'd also like to consider approval, if you will, to add beer and wine to our menu. I mentioned our patio. Obviously, we'd like to continue increasing the use of that. Maybe add a small little attraction, maybe an awning for better shading on the patio. We'll be adding security cameras to enhance, if you will, the, the nature of security that we're very important for us to, to be a feature. If necessary, we could utilize outdoor credit card processing for any payments that needed outside. And as I mentioned earlier, leveraging the Cedarbrook leftover amenities that are still there. One thing that's take a note is our summer months in general, before even COVID are about fifty to sixty percent lower in capacity and volume than our winter months. So we feel, you know, complimenting, if you will, the activities in the summer won't strain our parking, but we'll leverage the parking like we, we utilize today in the winter side of the business. Now I'd like to kind of give you more of an overview, feature presentation here. So as you see here right now, our building is currently over here in the upper right side portion of the building. The green awning that you see on the, on the west side of the building is our entrance. And to the south part of that is a, is a patio deck with a little bit of AstroTurf features on the outside. The, the property itself is, is everything, if you will, to the north of this parking. So all the green area inside of South Elizabeth Street, south of Second Street and to the west side of our existing parking and north of the, the parking for the one fifty building to the south of us.
So you'd expand your lease with the owner to pick up the, the other vacant property there?
Actually, it's part of our lease today.
Okay. So when he put the Cedarbrook trailer on there, that had to be with your agreement?
That's correct. It was a mutual agreed to on both of our, our perspectives.
Thank you.
So as we look at the features of this obstacle park, we're roughly talking about a one hundred foot by one hundred and sixty square foot rectangular featured footprint. I mentioned inside of here to start with. We'd like to put some sort of entrance to this area, opposite of, we will, our existing entrance. Inside of here, we would create mulch walking paths, if you will, to help with the flow of people visiting this area. And then on the outside, we talked about fencing and adding additional landscaping to make it much more attractive for the perimeter of the use area that we're talking about. Inside of here, as we look to help, if you will, parents and visitors, we would add benching and/or picnic tables for general seating. In the future, we're talking about adding, if you will, shaded areas to this seating area, if it makes sense. And as I previously mentioned, we're talking about, if you will, tents for shading to start with for gathering and just general relaxation area. As we talk about the other areas inside of here are the different types of inflatables that we're considering. We've not identified specifically what inflatable type obstacle elements we're, we're talking about. So what I'm showing you here are some of the, the, the options that we are considering. This is called a kangaroo jumper or jumping pillow. Some of you may have seen this at other locations within the state or out of state. That too has been developed with shading in mind. And as we talk about adding other obstacles around the perimeter here, each area or every other set of two obstacles would have monitored attendance overseeing the, the use of the, the obstacle courses. And we would add additional obstacle courses, if you will, around the perimeter. And then obviously with the entrance being attended as well. This is kind of just a general approach that we're, we're looking at now with, with ideas of the types of obstacles, you know, from an inflatable approach.
So no permanent merry-go-rounds or play equipment made out of heavy structure. Nothing's permanent. All of it would be of the inflatable type.
You are exactly correct. So we break in, if you will, our plan down into multiple phases. Phase one being, if you will, this summer approach. So as I mentioned, the inflatable obstacle courses and attractions, we're looking to add three to four of those inflatables, you know, with an entrance. Having the space to expand or potentially add two to three other inflatables in the future. The fenced-in area that I mentioned with split rail fencing surrounding it with attractive landscape base for both the aesthetics and safety that we would like to make sure exists. We talked about mulch walking paths. Overall, general improvement to the landscape. The tents we're talking about are party tents, if you will, which we'll mention here in a minute, about roughly the twenty to by thirty foot type of tents with picnic tables for shade, refreshments and party gathering. Mentioned the additional picnic tables or benches for seating and viewing. One thing we also like to add are bike racks with the security cameras, if you will. We would be promoting, if you will, the existing use of our deck for additional refreshments and gathering as it is used today. And like I mentioned, leveraging the Cedarbrook elements where possible.
You see, if, if you were to be granted the beer and wine license, do you see expanding this into nighttime adult activities?
No. It would, we were looking to keep our same market that we have today. So family oriented, yes. Specific to adult only, no. Our hours of operation, we're not looking to extend it any different than what we're approved for already.
So you'd be more than willing to accept that kind of a restriction if this was to move forward and had that kind of language in?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me just give some visuals here of some of the elements that we've been considering. Obviously, with the executive orders that we fall under, outdoor seating enclosures is an element of those executive orders still today. So we would obviously be following, you know, those guidance and elements of how we would do any tenting out, outside. There are very tight, various types of tents and approaches that have been used if at restaurants or other places today. To give kind of an idea, our thought here from the, initially from year one is a luxury party tent like this approach here. We'd probably use different colors to match our branding colors, but this type of, of open, open element tent. Some of the other value add and considerations, you know, when we talk about, we want to approach this. Again, we feel our, our business and our offering and how we approach family entertainment is more of a premium approach. We would like to continue that professional offering and appearance as we are today. That summer outdoor activity has been desired by our customer base over the years. And we've just never come up with an idea or a plan to, to move forward on that yet. We're looking to serve, if you will, that same family market and age groups, you know, to your questions there, Mr. McGee. So that's part of what our intent is. With this, we'll improve the landscaping. We think the, the fenced-in area, kind of like you can see in the background here. Nicer tree areas or even removing the, I'll say the the garbage trees that exist on the property there and replacing those with nicer trees if necessary would be in our plans. Improving the lawn and obviously mulching. As I mentioned, this is seasonal. It's, it's a May to October type of approach. Where we're basically looking to pack it up for the fall and winter and, you know, not have it be used in those months. On planning and considerations, we feel that this is minimal noise that will be produced. Obviously, most of it being laughter or fun screams from the, the families. Well, obviously adhere to all ordinance requirements, road setbacks and everything that's necessary. We don't feel that we're adding any height element different than what our building is already today. So that's, I, I don't think would, would be an impact. We are looking to add security, both with cameras and the fencing and attendant presence while that area is in use. As I mentioned, we don't think this traffic pattern will change to any different than how we are used today. Especially as the winter months are busy months, but this will be just a complimentary summer offering. Then as we look in the future, if you look at the obstacles and tractions, potentially adding another two to three obstacle courses in, if the area exists. The fenced-in area potentially as the need that we will, will obtain might be requiring added benching or picnic tables for seating. I mentioned a little bit about added shade covering. This is very common in several areas like this. And I have some pictures to kind of talk about that here in a minute that we might look for adding in the future. Obviously, you know, as the future summers, we continue promoting the outdoor obstacle park as well as our patio deck usage. I mentioned the kangaroo jumper or this jumping pillow. You may have seen this at parks or other recreation areas that are common. This is an inflatable attraction. Kind of, I wouldn't call it a trampoline, but that's kind of what it is, is it's a jump, another term of it is a jumping pillow. And as I mentioned, also, you know, shading that might be more comfortable going forward. Other shade considerations that we're talking about, besides, if you will, over this type of attraction. It's very common to see, if you will, the sail type shading over existing recreational play parks or play areas. You can see it gathering and these have different shapes. Attractions. As well as a very upscale look and feel to, to, to that type of approach. Other things even beyond, if you will, our first couple phases of consideration and, and going into the implementation of this. Obviously, I mentioned, you know, we're just looking for your directional approval and, and we'll work through the process on final approvals, but we know we have to identify the quantity and type of inflatables. Our hours of operation, we're basically in the past have been opened until nine o'clock. We feel we're going to even close that down a little bit earlier. Safety and security are of utmost importance to us and we'll, we'll continue that approach to our business. The inflatables, inflatables will be deflated nightly. We'll probably lock up and store, if you will, the mechanics of those inflatables. The entrance, we look to, to close off in the right fashion. So there is no entrance into that area. Other things that we're talking about is adding more parking striping, maybe end bumpers to the existing parking that's there now. The bench types, picnic table types for added seating. Our initial desire would be something on a recyclable reuse approach, much similar to the benches and that are outside the front door of City Hall in itself. I mentioned the observance and need, potential need of shading. As I mentioned, looking to get beer, wine approve, use approval. That's all we really want to do is the beer and wine approach. We do know we're outside the DDA district. We're also outside the Bistro district via basically a square block outside of that. But if it requires full liquor licensing and everything like that, you know, I'm open to, to figuring out what we need to do to, to get that approval. And as I mentioned, we're looking to start simple here in year one. But obviously have our eye in the future, both from the design, the growth of the, the, the area inside of that and what's best services those needs. I don't think I need approval, but we're talking about adding a canopy to our existing patio right now. And then as a, some of the elements to maybe close down the, the seasonal use is maybe changing things to maybe a, a approach like a, a fall hay bale obstacle attraction, you know, that I think would, would draw, if you will, people to the city. You know, and other businesses, you know, throughout the, the, the city itself. Going forward, again, what inflatables? Is it a jumping pillow down the road? Benches and picnic tables, shades. Other elements that we've considered besides this, we talked about miniature golf. We've talked about splash pads over the year. Those are all different things that, that we've been open to consider and just haven't come forward until now with our initial approach. That kind of ends us here. So obviously we're open to your comments, your feedback. What items are needed next? And then try to get, if you will, a directional approval, you know, so that we can move this forward here quickly for this summer.
Thank you for a very thorough presentation. I think we, we got it. We understand what you want to do. Any questions for Jeff at this point? Vidia, I think. Obviously very key. Oh, Patty, go ahead.
Yeah, I, this is Patricia Clark Martin. To the petitioner, the, the site plan, would you mind just bringing it up again? I just have a question.
Sure.
Sorry, making you all the way back.
That's all right. Go as, as early or late into it as you want here.
Just, just the site plan, just, you know, the, the overhead view. Where it shows the building in relation to where the area is going to be and the parking. I can just ask the question.
You need, I have it up on my screen. Is, am I not presenting at the moment still?
No, you have to share it.
You have to share it again. Share it again. All right. Give me a second here. There we go.
Thank you. So I don't know what this road is, but the, the road that comes off of Second Street.
This is South Elizabeth. This is called South Elizabeth.
Okay, so South Elizabeth, the parking off of South Elizabeth. Is it not there, but south, okay, below that, is that accessible to you as well? Or is that the other, is that all the other building?
Yes. So this, this is our building here in the upper right.
Right.
The one fifty South Elizabeth building. The 150 South Elizabeth building is, uh, to the bottom of the picture here. So, um, and, and this parking is shared. So we have parking here to the west of our building. We have parking to the east of our building. And then, uh, the, the spaces in between are shared. And then they actually have additional parking to the south of their building as well. That's not shown here.
Okay. So there's a lot of shared parking there. So the option to maybe manipulate access would be a possibility.
Correct. Also note, if you will, the, the, the five spaces here that kind of border, um, the perimeter, that area that we talked about. That was the parking that was added by Cedar Brook, um, and still exists today.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Christian Hauser. I've got several, but I just want to ask one right now.
Go ahead.
Is the trailer that was there for Cedar Brook, is that going to be removed or is that going to stay there while the kids, you know, during this process?
Yeah, the trailer was removed, uh, about a year and a half ago.
Oh, okay.
It was, uh, where you see these two drawn trees right here. The trailer sat just to the, the right of those drawn trees at that time.
Okay. While you were talking, I did go on like a Google search here and I see the trees and I see the, the trailer. So that'll be gone. Okay. Thank you very much for asking that, answering.
And they were allowed to leave the trailer place essentially during their grand opening period.
Correct.
You know, once the building was opened and they had, uh, models with inside the structure, then the trailer had to be removed and it was.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you very much. And I've got more questions, but I'll let some other people talk first.
Okay. Hey, one of the, the key questions before all of this is can this be done on this property as it's currently zoned?
Uh, that was a lot of information presented by the applicant. I don't have any idea about this, except that they are looking to do something during this pandemic to help support the business. So right off, um, right after the presentation, I'm not able to say what if any category of approval they would actually fit into or what the approval process should be. I will need a day to take a look at it.
You have to research that.
Yeah, I will definitely have to research it. I can see where, uh, Jeff is coming from and the pandemic situation is unprecedented and businesses have tried to adapt in order to, uh, you know, support and keep them going. So I can see where this is coming from, but I've also got to see how it fits into our current ordinance and how it can possibly be interpreted. I will definitely have to research it.
Mr. Chairman, it's Nick by May. So under industrial one, special exception uses. I'll read it. Number five, outdoor, this is, this is right in the zoning arts presently. Outdoor commercial recreational uses such as golf driving ranges, sports field, skate parks, picassos, what he's do liveries and the like, and indoor commercial recreational uses. That's why when Jeff first met with me, it's not such a wild. Uh, we, we talked about, could we kind of do it like the city council did with outdoor platforms and outdoor. You know, administratively prove them due to COVID, but there is a venue here that when Vidya gets a chance, she'll be able to look up.
It looks like it probably fits though, right Nick? It looks like it probably could be done.
It, it very well could.
Okay, I, I got it.
Mr. Chairman, this is Christian Hauser again. I'm sorry. And, and kind of going on that same thing. If, if it is permitted under the zoning requirements or the rules and there's some traction here, what is the lead time for something like this? I mean, it was a very detailed and comprehensive proposal. And just very frankly, is there sufficient time or how much time would the applicant need in order to, to get this going and to get it set up and, 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 and established so that he can benefit from the, uh, from the process?
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, we talked about that, talked about that with Jeff and if we took it as a spe- a straight special exception, it's two meetings with Apollo caring. So we could, we have two meetings in April and two in March, May. So we could speed this up if.
So he can be approved by the end of May.
That is correct. And Jeff wanted to get this going by June.
Sure. Time is of the essence. You can't do this in October.
Exactly. Right. And, and then Christian, again, and, and just to, again, I'm not trying to be, I'm, I want to know these because I think it's going to help the process. So everyone understands the time involved. When you get the approval, I'm presuming the applicant doesn't want to start ordering this or purchasing materials and supplies and equipment until he has that final approval. So if it's June or if it's end of May, what's the lead time for some of these structures that he had put in the proposal? And again, I want to be clear, I'm, I'm just asking. I don't want to sound pessimistic. I'm just trying to figure out how quickly we can do this so he can get the most out of the, out of the season out there.
But I'll try to take that a little bit there, Christian. Thank you. Um, the, the lead time is probably four to six weeks. If you look at the true development, it's really the acquiring of the, the inflatable obstacles. Um, is the, being the, the long lead time, the longest lead time. The, the implementing of a fence, improving the landscaping. Even the tents are a shorter, you know, lead time, you know, uh, uh, requirements. So it's the obstacles themselves that, uh, are, are the more challenging ones. I've reached out to, uh, several different suppliers of those now. And it's anywhere from four to eight weeks, depending on which type of design we want to go with.
Okay. And, and, and I might as well ask, well, I've got one final question here, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, the request for the alcoholic license, I mean, is that a, is that a make a break proposal? Is it one of those situations? I don't want to sound like a puritan or anything, but I mean, if you don't get it, is it going to have this whole thing fall apart? And, and have you done a cost benefit analysis as to the cost of the license, the cost of purchasing alcohol? And then frankly, the market for something like that.
No, that's, that's a great question. And we've, we've have visited that over the years, even from the beginning as it, uh, was proposed to us to consider. Um, and there are pros and cons to, to, to doing that. And obviously would require, you know, uh, specific processes and management to, to do what we want out of that. We are not looking to have that added, if you will, day one. Uh, we feel it is a good enhancement to not only, uh, this request, but to our ongoing business, you know, throughout the year. Uh, to be able to offer that. So, you know, we expect that, we don't expect that to be approved. Um, and in place, if you will, at the same time, this is able to be open. Um, and they, I would say that about half of facilities like ours do offer that. Um, we have been, um, right prior to when the pandemic, we had received approval by two other communities in the area to, uh, um, open up, uh, similar centers, uh, to complement what we do here, uh, but in other, um, local, local cities. Uh, we've been approached by a fourth one here in the last couple of months as well. That actually had a liquor license already within it. So it's, uh, it, it's common, but it, it's not mandatory, yeah, um, you know, in this type of business.
Thank you. Thank you.
If that didn't happen till year number two, for example, just because of the necessary process you'd have to go through, that's not, that's not necessarily a deal break.
Absolutely. And, and that's kind of what we're, we're planning on anyway, because we, we, we know it, there could be a long lead time for that.
But as a commission, uh, only because time is of the essence, but does anyone have a a strong objection that they can state, uh, right, right at the front here? Is there anything about this that you find completely unacceptable or unattractive for the city?
Mr. Chairman. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Lord. Um, well, I, I don't want to raise my hand after, uh, after that intro, except although that I have necessarily a incredibly strong, uh, objection here, but I, I guess I do have, uh, a few just concerns, um, maybe questions. But I think, uh, it's great and we should be thinking outside the box to support our local businesses here that have clearly been impacted. So, and I'm, I'm completely on board with doing that. Um, I think we're walking a little bit of a fine line though between, um, a great attraction for our local families. And potentially an eyesore for a, a major, you know, road that's traveled by, uh, is particularly the folks that live uh, on the east side of town. Um, and I'm not saying that it, it, it would become that. But I'm, I'm saying that I, I believe it, it could be that depending on the type of equipment that's being used. I'm thinking like the height of that equipment could matter if it's a hodgepodge of, you know, inflatables that, um, I think that, I think it has the potential to be an eyesore. I guess that would be my, a little bit of my, my concern. So I think it matters what sort of equipment we're talking about, um, potentially the height may become important. Um, so I, I, you know, I guess I'd like to see, see a little more. Uh, I'm certainly open to it. Uh, I think it could be, it could be a good thing, but it could also go the other way. Um, so I guess I just, I just put that out there.
If you're thinking like I am, some of the, uh, some of the inflatable displays that we see now at Christmas time are, uh, wow. I, I don't know why people spend their money on those things, but.
Yeah. And the, you know, and the other.
Incredibly ugly.
Ag- agreed. And, and the other thing is, is I just don't know. I'm curious about what the zoning approval and process is going to be. If this is a special exception. Uh, it would almost, you know, be ideal, although I know this, this wouldn't be good for, for, for Jeff, but, um, you know, if it was some sort of an approval on a year by year basis that, you know, they needed to come back and renew an approval. Uh, as opposed to just a walking away from, uh, uh, this body with an approval that, you know, they now have by right. You know, with sort of limited, uh, conditions to it. So.
We'll review it every two or three, but some, something with an endpoint.
Yeah, but I just, I recognize that there's challenges with that, right? Because he has to make an investment to make this happen. So I just, I'm just a little bit concerned with, um, how this would appear. Um, you know, the fences is great and there's certainly some things that could enhance that, that area and make that corridor look good. But if, you know, right behind it is some, um, sort of unsightly inflatables, then that that could have a negative, uh, impact on the community.
Thanks for your candor. Anyone else? Someone else had their hand up when, uh, Mr. Lord was speaking, started.
I, I did, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess I was just going to say that, you know, I, I don't want to speak for everybody here, but I think there's a a general thought that we're obviously going to do everything we can to try to help our local businesses, as, uh, Mr. Lord said. Um, there are still a lot of unanswered questions. Um, Vidya is going to have to take a look at a lot of things, uh, parking. It's been mentioned, but you know, I don't know what the parking requirements are for, uh, an outdoor facility like that and, and, and whether um, there would be enough. So I, I, I mean, I guess I'm more than open to taking a, a closer look at this, but, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna take, um, you know, Nvidia's, uh, sharp eye to, uh, put it into focus for us, I think.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, it's Nick. And I, and I talked to Jeff. Frankly, my biggest worry was traffic distraction, because like Eric said, that's a popular road. And he talked about how we set that back properly, because, uh, like a corn maze, that, that gets, you could have thousands of people wanting to come to that, right? You know, that's not. And then again, the dispatch, you know, driving down that road is a pretty tight road. Making sure that we're not offending that, nor the view of the people from the condos or the Royal Park Hotel with noise. So video can look at all that. Jeff was prepared to talk about all of that one time.
Yeah, maybe the inflatables went to the back row or something like that.
Yeah, I thought if it was behind the building, it probably wouldn't even be an issue, but it's right out there.
Yeah, okay.
I think the challenge would be to try and figure out, is this a special exception use that'll come back year after year every summer? Or is this a temporary land use like the portable classrooms? For St. John's Church and like Commissioner Lord said, this is a significant investment on the applicant's part. Say you approve it the first year and what happens afterwards is not very palatable to the city. And you deny it for the second year. Now the applicant is stuck with all these really expensive equipment and amount of money they have invested in fencing and landscaping. Uh, also I want to make sure when I look at the ordinance that we create a distinction between this use and something that would be like a carnival festival or a Fourth of July.
Right. And a fest.
It's, it's very similar because there you have inflatables, you have rides for kids. It, it becomes a summer festival event, um, to make the distinction between this and, um, something like, you know, you said economies during, during Halloween or something that starts from October 1st to October 31st, even if it's one month. And those are really popular because people are constantly looking for places to take their kids. And if it's outdoor, people will be there. So what parking would be acceptable is, you know, what parking standard would you apply to a temporary use? So there's a lot of things to take a look at over here and I definitely will. I think the presentation was very well done, but there's a lot of, uh, background that I have to research on this specifically with the use itself.
Anyone else?
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is, uh, Commissioner Martin. The, the, the first thing, uh, I fully want to support our local businesses and have value added to the community for the families. Um, the only concern that I had just right off the bat was why I asked about the parking was the cro- the crossing of the existing parking lot from the building to the, um, the, the play area. And so my question, um, and my thought maybe because you were asking for direction and maybe some, some guidance is, you know, do we have the ability to redirect the entrance into the, uh, uh, facility instead of coming off of Second Street? So you have that, the, the, the traffic coming through between the two entities? Having it come off of that, uh, South Elizabeth Street? Is that an, is that, is that a possibility?
Something.
Because, yeah.
Anyone else? Jeff, I had, I had two, uh, one concern is, uh, what's called an attractive news nuisance. Uh, what can happen after hours and how is the place secure to prevent that? Uh, teenagers will find their way here. If there's, for example, a trampoline, an operable trampoline, uh, unless you put up, unless you put up razor wired fencing, they will find their way to the trampoline. So that's something you, I think you need to consider. The second thing is the split rail fence along second. I, I picture little kids escaping the grasp of mom or dad or an attendant and darting into second. And there's, there's simply no room for error. So at least from my point of view, if this is to go forward, I would want to see something, some kind of fencing along second that absolutely prevents that from happening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, just another point, and because of course we don't know where it's all going, but how does this all fit in with COVID and COVID restrictions? I know it's outside, um, but you know, how to, you know, if there's a ton of people, like you said, how does that fit in? That's just another thing for, for Vidya to figure out for us.
And the operator would frankly have to limit the access to comply with the, uh, whatever the emergency order is of the day.
And the challenge of sanitizing the equipment after every, every kid, like two kids of a family go sanitizing inflatables is not a thing.
Well, that's a good question, but what about our parks? It's a few, if you happen to have been at the park over the weekend, I mean, you would have seen there were hundreds of kids.
Yeah.
You know, nobody is sanitizing that equipment, just kind of the other side of things.
Run this weekend, weren't they? It was crazy.
It was beautiful weather. So yeah, everybody was out.
Yeah.
But so I don't know if there are restrictions, right?
Yeah, I don't either.
For outdoor.
So that's another one, Vidya, for your list. What do we say to Jeff? I, because time is of the essence, he's got to get going on this. I, Jeff, I don't think I hear an objection so to, to you going forward and working with Vidya and Nick to put a site plan proposal together. That's, that's kind of where I think we are. Uh, make your next move. Does anyone see an objection to that?
Mr. No, I, this is Christian Hauser. No, certainly not. I think just the opposite. It sounds that, you know, I certainly don't want to speak for the other commissioners, but everyone seems to be kind of on the same page here that we're certainly in favor of it. We certainly would want this to work. Provided there's some assurances on various issues that are provided. So I would agree. Talk with Nick, talk with Vidya, see what we can do. And, and I will certainly make myself available if there's another meeting in April. Then you tell me when and I'll be here.
Okay. Jeff, is that enough guidance for you?
No, it's very good. I do have a couple of things and I can comment on several of those points, but, uh, from the COVID, uh, question. There are limits on outdoor gatherings as much as there are, uh, not as restricted, as, as strict as they are in indoor. But there are outdoor, um, uh, COVID restrictions, um, that do exist today. And have over the, over the, the course of, uh, the pandemic here. The couple of other elements from the eyesores and, uh, the other things. Um, I appreciate the, the feedback, you know, because some of this was, was conceptually a thought about ideas, um, like the, the hay bale element. We certainly understand and don't want to cause a distraction, you know, to, to our neighbors and the community in general. But obviously want to provide, if you will, entertainment. the community in general, but obviously want to provide, if you will, entertainment, uh, you know, as the city would like it uh, to be had. You know, in, in the area that we are, so we appreciate that. Um, the uh, um, the entrance questions. Uh, Patty, I'll, I'll work with Vidya on that so that we can figure that out. I know we had some directional uh, parking uh, arrangement with our existing parking today, so we'll revisit that and I look forward to working with Vidya again as she uh, helped, helped us uh, figure out our uh, uh, arrangement today. So looking forward to working with her again. And in regards to the fencing, um, yeah, the split rail one might not provide, if you will, the exact element. We, we've talked about um, other types of fences. We've even talked about adding, if you will, some more, I'll, I'll call it the uh, less visible uh, link or chain, chain link or elements within a split rail fence that doesn't allow, if you will, pass through with a split rail. We don't wanna be um, obnoxious in our fence, but wanna be safe um, on top of everything to, to be a priority, so we'll certainly work through that, that with Vidya and Nick as well. Um, but uh, I appreciate all the directions. One other question I had. You know, like I mentioned, the, the obstacle course, um, is, is um, was probably our, our, our leading uh, concept and area that we're interested in. Over the couple of years and, and few years that we've been at this location, you know, Splash Park, uh, Putt Putt Course, those other elements have come up. Um, and not that uh, we're presenting that, but if you have different ideas of how we can better utilize that outdoor space, or um, we'd be open to considering that, working with the city in any fashion to the, the look at arrangements if, if there's something different there that uh, is more uh, of, of different interest. So I appreciate that feedback as well.
Hey, we wish you the best and I suspect we will see you shortly.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, good night. The next item is uh, number eight, discussion regarding the review of the lighting standards residential and multiple family in relationship to the commercial standards. Vidya, is this one yours?
Uh, this, I believe, is uh, the attorney Jeff Cox's presentation.
I'll take it, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
So uh, before planning commission is a uh, is a proposed ordinance amendment. And uh, this, uh, we, probably about a year ago, we were working on this last and uh, there was uh, the current ordinance. Um, that just kinda stemmed from the, the, the fact of, uh, I think the fire chief is, is on a line too, but the, a number of years ago, there was language put in the ordinance that said that no direct light sources uh, shall be visible at the property line or uh, no bare bulb illumination. And the um, oh, thank you, Vidya. And so the, the enforceability of, of such provisions. Because they would be, as you can imagine, every carriage light and not every carriage light, but the, the vast majority of carriage lights have exposed bulbs, bare bulbs. And uh, so it really became the, you know, when people would have complaints or state concerns over lights. Um, you know, the fire department is able to, or the building department can go out there with, with a, a light meter. Uh, because there are certain standards in the light ordinance about uh, having not more than one foot candle. Um, uh, strength at the property line, five feet uh, off the ground. And that is a, a tangible uh, regulation versus uh, when, when you have a, a bare bulb prohibition or light source, uh, those, those are um, you will find those everywhere in the city. And so the, the concern became enforcement. And so the um, so the um, there was additional discussion at planning commission. So we, we went through the ordinance amendment. And so the, the portions that you see stricken uh, are the references to the bare bulb and the, the light sources. But in this particular version, and I don't think actually the city council, or excuse me, planning commission has seen this uh, this version, but if we, if we scroll down a little bit um, to the, the page four where we added language, there was concerns uh, about commercial properties. Yep, right there. Thank you. Uh, commercial properties and multiple family dwellings having, you know, being adjacent to residential properties and having uh, lights um, uh, that illuminate. Uh, you know, they, they have their, their, their interest in having their property lit and the residences next to it have interest in not having it lit up so much. And so um, we added proposed language in there for discussion. Um, which uh, this, you know, this says exterior lighting from commercial buildings or multiple family dwellings uh, in any district that abuts or faces a single family dwelling will have shielding that directs downward, uh, such that light doesn't shine in the windows of the single family homes. Um, so then it raises the question of, of uh, pre-existing lights and are you gonna make uh, uh, commercial property, remove all the lights or put shielding on all these lights that may, may have been there for years? And so the um, the, the, the suggested language of per, if planning commission wanted to proceed with the adding requirements of shielding or uh, downward direction is to maybe have some sort of, um, you can have it for a while, but eventually you have to remove that. We'll call it a non-conformity if this is put into place. And some triggers that we threw in here are such that if the, if the light, non-conforming light is, is damaged, uh, so you know, such that it has to be uh, replaced, then that would be a natural trigger uh, to having a, a compliant light. Um, other one is uh, if the, if it's just flat out, the, the property owner replaces the light. Or having a sunset provision of, uh, and we threw out here a, a year after uh, that prohibition becomes effective. Um, so that language was added in, uh, I believe it uh, was uh, uh, council member Bavakwa that uh, had been pushing on that issue such that we added language for discussion uh, for today. Uh, so um, it was, the request was to bring this back COVID to kinda shelve this. Um, but now uh, it's, it was, uh, now it's time to bring it back to see if there's interest on the planning commission level to uh, to amend the ordinance. Um, and whether it's adding the, the prohibition here or just removing the the other language that are proposed, that is proposed to be removed, uh, we're, we're here for discussion.
Hey.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Um, I guess to, to add a little context to this, uh, I did, I did provide Siona with a, a couple, an image and a small video. Um, Siona, do you have that image?
Yeah, I will share the image now and then I will um, play the video. Sorry.
So that I took from my, my slider in my kitchen. I opened the slider door and took a picture out my back window. Um, uh, to me, like, I, I look at that as, it's almost as if you're living in a penitentiary yard versus a subdivision. Um, I want safety and light, um, you know, those, the folks that live in the uh, in the apartments deserve to have uh, an element of safety, but at the same time, I deserve to have um, you know, kind of a quality of life. Um, and have property rights that go along with uh, my residence here. So tha- that's, that's context there. And also, um, can you go to the video?
Yep.
Uh, this I know is, is not allowable via ordinance. But you'll see the cupola at the top, that, that you can't see it real well because of the blinding light that's on the side of the building. But at the top in the trees, you'll see if the video plays. Um, there's a, yeah, or yes, there, there's a flashing cupola there and that starts at dusk and goes all the way through to the morning.
Where is this acting?
This is uh, this is Great Oaks Apartments.
What is the purpose of that cupola?
I, I apparently just to annoy me. I have no idea why it's there. Maybe to stop planes from hitting a second story where trees are like three times higher than the building. I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, so I, I did, I did mention that to administration. I think something's gonna be done about it. Um, but also i- in knowing that we were gonna bring this up for discussion, I, I put out a a communication on our Facebook page, um, said, hey, this is gonna be discussed. If you can't make it to the meeting and you wanna have a comment, just let me know. So very briefly, I'll read, um, someone said, won't be able to make it to, to the meeting, but here at the end of Aspen Drive, we were having trouble with the blinding lights directed to our houses. I'm not sure whether it's Great Oaks or Ludlow, but especially over the winter months, it's painful. Please bring this concern up if you can. And then someone responded to that saying, it's like the apartment complex goes out of their way to shine the lights in our houses. Um, and I, I think that there's neighbors uh, on the call if, uh, if you wanna at some point open up for public comment. I think there are folks out there, so uh, that's why I kinda wanna have this discussion and I wanted to give you guys some context. Thanks.
Is that all the uh, the Great Oaks complex that all of those lights are the same complex?
Um, the, I, the, are you talking about the folks that are here to talk about?
No, 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 the lights shining on you, they all come from.
That, that, that's just one, that's from one building, one building of the complex.
Okay.
Into my, my yard.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Is this um, some of the proposed changes that we're talking about, is this for both commercial and residential?
The, the, I understand it is, the, the change is for um, multi-family residential. Commercial already has those um, restrictions in place. This is about addressing multi-family residential and the, the, the strike-throughs and, and uh, uh, Mr. Uh, uh, city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, the strike-throughs would impact residential in that it, it would make it so that the bare bulb restrictions that are currently on the books will no longer be there, which would actually make things worse, in my opinion. But would make things better for the ordinance folks at the city because they're having a difficult time trying to get people to comply.
Okay, cause I know we got that one letter sent to us from a, from a resident. And that one seemed to be addressing just residential, so I wanted to kinda know if there was a differentiation.
I, what Mr. Bavakwa said was, was accurate. The, the, the new language uh, we did put in there from commercial buildings and multiple family dwellings adjacent to single family homes. So that that is, is narrow, uh, that's the narrow tailoring there. And the strikeout language is the that is the, that was the, the genesis of the ordinance amendment to begin with, just based on a, an enforceability issue. Um, and that would apply to, um, that would no longer prohibit a, a, a bare bulb or light source from being seen uh, from any property.
Dennis, we do have a comment um, from a caller.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, Pat, do you wanna unmute?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, well, hi, um, Pat Kane, eight seventeen West Fourth Street. And I'm not going to comment on what I hoped you all received, because that's residential to residential. However, pardon me?
Go, go right ahead, Pat.
Okay, um, but the concern is also from this multi-family and um, dwelling. It doesn't necessarily have to be an apartment complex. It can just be uh, multi-family, meaning two families in, in the housing. And we do have problems in our older area even with that, because lights are not directed down, they're not covered, they're overly bright. Uh, we've had issues even down the street where floodlights are like blinding on a small uh, condominium that is built into a residential area. And they've got parking. A small parking, maybe four cars or six cars, walking at night, you walk into a floodlight right into your face and it's blinding coming up to that corner. People have commented before, people have commented for the overlighting into another entire yard, backyard, second story windows. And we get nothing for the quality of our life. And I think what we need to do on these commercial and uh, zoned multi-family, whether it's two families or four families or an apartment complex. Those lights need to be shielded, directed down and cut off definitely by their property line. Safety and security for a property is just that for those people. Somebody may live a life where they're very comfortable going about something very natural in the night and don't need it, or they use their lights judiciously when they feel it is needed for a purpose or something, and then it's much dimmer or it's, or it's just better, it's more of a dark sky. They're not imposing it beyond their property lines. And I think it's very important. And you know what? We're seeing the same problem with these huge infills. It's, it's a mess to turn someone's day or night into the day. And I really think that we need to get it much stronger language, all sides, but definitely that. So thank you for that. And I'll speak later on residential.
Appreciate, uh, appreciate you calling in and uh.
Thank you.
The weather, we got it and we'll, we'll talk about that.
Thank you.
Jeff, I know this has been going on a long time, um.
Dennis, I'm sorry, there is another comment on the public.
Jeff, I, while that person's coming in here. Um, your third possible remedy, putting a uh, putting a uh, time restriction on making the change. These are legal lights right now. We're gonna make them non-conforming if we adapt the ordinance. Is there any risk to the city? Because we've created the non-conformity, forcing them to uh, change fixtures and things like that?
Well, that, that's always been the concern is, is that first of all, the, the vast uh, number of, of potential non-conformities. Now, with, with this being applicable to commercial and multiple family next to single family residential, that does narrow the band of, of potential non-conformities. But we did have a lot of discussion on, on, well, what if, you know, it would have existing lights, how can we make them? You know, and, and it's my understanding that a, a number of people have been discussed or approached on this, they just will refuse to, to take the steps. And so this doesn't require necessary removal of those lights. Um, although that is one option, the other option is to shield them. And, and we determined that, uh, you know, to give a period of time, because they're not, you know, light, lighting isn't inexpensive. And so this allows for, for budgets to happen and for planning uh, to happen. So uh, we put in there for discussion, uh, a year to, to come into compliance. And I, I think that's a, a reasonable time to come into compliance, especially when we're giving them options of removal or shielding.
Okay. Nick, have you or your staff ever approached Great Oaks? Asked for voluntary compliance?
Uh, Chief's on the line and he would be the man that has, and I believe that he has, if you wanna jump in, John.
Yeah, Mr. Chair for a second, please.
Go ahead.
Just so, just so we don't rehash some things, there are residents that, that have some input on this. I know specifically folks that have contacted the apartments multiple times, so maybe if we can get the public comment done, then we can have a better discussion, hopefully.
Okay, well, Siana, go, go ahead with your next caller.
The Kelly's, Glenn Kelly?
Glenn Kelly and Tonya Gibson here.
Hi.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Don't worry.
Thank you for your time tonight. So, so we, we experienced very similar, if not worse than what Dean showed in his video. Um, our, the whole back of our house is lit up by the, the Great Oaks Apartments um, floodlight that they come on just before dusk. Uh, and don't go off until after dusk. In fact, they were on this afternoon due to the, the cloudy weather. Um, so we get that. We've had to put up curtains and blinds in our house. Um, so that we can block that, block those lights out because they're just, they're, they're very, very distracting and unbearable.
There, who have you contacted?
We, we went over and spoke to um, the, the people in the office uh, a couple of years ago when they first put the lights up. Two or three times, and we've asked them if they can address that. Um, and their response was, we actually can't turn them down any further. Because it sets off the automatic timer and then the light flashes on and off, which actually was happening this year when there was a lot of snow on the ground as well. So, yep. We, we have tried a couple of times and uh, to no success yet.
Got it. Okay, any questions for these fine folk? Well, thank you for calling in. It just uh, adds to uh, what Dean has already reported to us and appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and uh, we have Jessica. You can go ahead.
Hi, Jessica, how are you tonight?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, good.
I live at nine five six Aspen down the street from Dean. My property backs up to the Rochester Place Apartments, not Great Oaks.
So a different ownership.
Different ownership, totally different complex. Um, I have four, and so there, the, I'll, let me, can I? Is the public allowed to share their screen?
Sure.
Yes, you can go ahead. You can go ahead.
Okay, um, this is my, can everybody see this?
Yes, it's true.
Okay, so this is my property right here. Instead of what you saw with Dean's where there were lights across the back, Rochester Place has lights on the top of their, like the corners of their buildings where these yellow X's are. Um, so I have one, two, three, four um, that are directly shining into my house. Um, and I'm, I'm kind of an upslope of a hill. So as I'm actually sitting in my office right now, um, in my upstairs bedroom, though this light right here is shining right in my eyes. Um, despite our, you know, I've recurtained my whole house. I've done the whole thing. It doesn't matter. I have been able to contact Rochester Place Apartments. Um, and they've had somebody go up on the roof and turn it, um, but they have terrible hours and they rarely answer the phone. It takes a couple of weeks for somebody to get up there. The other issue um, that I ran into, the um, fire chief was nice enough to come out and test the um, light pollution in my yard.
Yes.
But because if you look right here, this is a carport. And my backyard slopes down to the carport. So if he's five feet above the grade, he's down below the carport. So these lights are never going to hit where.
They hit your second story. In other words, that's, that's.
It hits my second story. I can, I can read on my deck when it's dark. Um, I don't need to turn lights on in my backyard anymore. Um, you know, it's just, it's oppressive and it's an unreasonable interference with, you know, my use and enjoyment of my home. Um, and there's no there's no enforcement. And I, I would just urge everybody um, on the commission to put in a pretty strict enforcement provision because right now it's, you know, oh, you call two weeks later, they turn the light, somebody else goes back up on the roof to do something else, you know, two weeks later turns it back, starts the whole thing over again where I've got a call for two weeks and it takes two weeks to get them back up there. Um, and I have to call about four different lights. Um, and it's, it's annoying. So, you know, whatever.
To you when you call them? Are they respectful to you?
Yeah, they're respectful. I mean, they're now kind of annoyed that I call. It's like, oh, it's her again. Um, you know, she wants me to turn the light, like I don't have anything better to do. But I mean, these lights are on from dusk this morning. They were on until eleven o'clock. Um, because it was cloudy. Um, and, and the people in the apartments absolutely should have safety. Um, it, Rochester Place specifically, they replaced um, these lights in October of twenty eighteen. Before that, they were just bulbs and they were fine. Um, you know, I think same positioning, they just put different bulbs or something in these actual lights. And so now they're just, i- it's just offensive. Um, so again, I'd appreciate stricter enforcement, easier for, you know, them to be fined.
We hear you. And that is, that has been the problem. The existing ordinances don't seem to give the staff the authority they need to make changes. So we're hoping that we come up with the right language to be able to do that now into the future. So again, thanks for calling. We appreciate it very much and stay tuned.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Sienna?
No, that was it. That concludes the callers. Um.
Okay. So back to the commissioners and uh, uh, questions for the attorney and the staff.
Dennis, I have a question or two. Um, so, you know, I'm a believer in, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. And I'm sitting here thinking, okay, if we make these changes as proposed in six months, who's gonna come back to us and complain that we've you know, uh, damaged their ability to sell their prop or home there, you know, there's gonna be some un, unintended consequence to changing.
Cars are getting broken into or.
Yes.
Any age or whatever.
I mean, if we exhausted all other means to approach the apartment complexes and strongly urge them to put in you know, uh, different parking lights uh, that aren't wall packs or, or mounted to the roof and, you know, shining down.
Chief, are you with us? I know you, you're the man out front on this.
Mr. McGee, this is Chief Cislik. Can I make a comment, please?
Please do.
So, um, as the attorney has referenced in the standards, the standards really from our standpoint of enforcement has two um, gauges that we look at. One is we use a luminator to uh, measure the lumens at the property line and the one resident was exactly right on the money. You know, we measured at the five foot level and we looked at one lumen. If it's less than one lumen at the property line, they're okay. The other piece that is the, in the go, no-go gauge is the comment about being able to see the light from somebody's bedroom window. Um, I can honestly tell you, I, I, I've not been able to uh, go into anybody's bedroom window to check out their lights and I really don't want to do that.
We're pleased to hear that, Chief. We're very pleased to hear that.
Thank you. But what's gonna be the problem is, is, is that go, no-go gauge. And then for the future, if we do make changes and depending on the changes that are made, um, where we will have to go, I think, and the city attorney maybe can comment is to put a, a, a large group of people under notice um, about what the new rules are. In other words, uh, uh, if we still say we can see the light, um, you know, we can see the light, light travels a long distance, as we all know. Um, but is just seeing a light a, a violation? We, we need to be able to give something in the ordinance that if uh, you want us to enforce, that we can take a look at and say enforce. In other words, uh, measuring the lumens is one thing, seeing the light is a different thing. One is science, one is observation. And whatever uh, the planning commission or city council decides to do, we need to be able to use as much science as possible. And then I think um, we, we have to figure out a way to, how do we let all of the non-conformities know that they're non-conforming? And then what, what's the plan to go ahead and uh, go forward?
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Uh, Jeff, what, what do you think with the, the comments here?
Well, the, you know, I, the, Chief, uh, Fire Chief and I and, and administration, we've been talking about this one for, for a long time and and he's just uh, identified the, the issues that, that we run into is that you know, what, what is the level of expectation that the city is going to require of, of staff and the Fire Chief and his department to uh, to go around is the expectation to go around the city to make sure that, you know, every light is um, uh, you know, in compliance with it. And I, I, I would think that the answer is going to be no. I mean, a lot of the ordinance violations are are complaint driven and more directed um, in this case, you know, if, if this uh, you know, if, if the um, removal, the one-year removal, for instance, goes through that requirement, I, I would see that, uh, you know, the city has its usual postings uh, that it does. It, it can, obviously we know of a couple of complexes now that have been identified. And that's an easy reach out specifically to those complexes to make sure they realize um, the, the, their obligations. Uh, so that I think is an easy reach out. Um, you know, the, the newsletter I, I know can be utilized um, as far as that goes. So you know, the, the notice I think is not as difficult as the enforcement. Um, enforcement is going to be um, you know, how much, you know, i- is the city going to be going out to every um, single-family property to make sure that the lights in the adjacent commercial um, are shielded at, at the three hundred and sixty-sixth day. Um, maybe, um, but I think that's where the Fire Chief is looking for is is, is that what the city wants to have happen or is this you know, in ordinance that's going to be, if it does get amended to require the, the downward or the replacement? Um, you know, that'll be interesting to see the, from a policy perspective, what, where the city adminis, or city council wants to go with uh, with directing staff on that.
Sounds like we have a standard right now at the five-foot level at the property line. Do we need one at the you know, second floor level? Almost all these complaints are about the bedroom. You know, dis- disturbance late at night, disturbance of the.
Um, Chairman McGee, we, there is a, in it and it's, can you see the light from the bedroom window? It doesn't say, does the light generate half a lumen or half a candela or two candela? It says, can you see it? Um, and so again.
Has to put a, uh, more difficult. Put a number in there, John? You know?
Well, uh, num, again, numbers are always something that you can measure, Chairman McGee, but then, you know, I guess, I, I guess I'll break my rule and I guess I'll have to go into a lot of residents' bedrooms to be able to measure it. And, and I don't know that that's makes me feel real comfortable.
Or at the outside wall.
Sure. And I guess, you know, then it's, are we done standing at the base of the the wall or, I mean, let, I understand, you know, the residents' concern about the light shining into their bedroom window and things. And I understand that, but me measuring the, at the base of the foundation of the wall is going to be different maybe than what they can actually see. So uh, it, I'm, I'm, it's it, I'd like to be able to take it out of the judgment call. In other words, to be able to tell a, a person who might be in violation that, hey, you're in violation. Um, a- and it needs to be taken care of. And here's what it has to be. It has to be half a lumen, it has to be two lumen, uh, you know, whatever it happens to be.
It's a lot easier to defend it that way, obviously.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Nick, do you see any value in uh, over a short period of time, maybe six months, contacting these individual apartment complex owners or the management company that operates them and tell them what the problem is, see if we can gain compliance, tell them that if we cannot, uh, very soon, the council's likely to make it mandatory to see, see if we can move this along.
Yeah, I, I mean, always a soft hand is easier, but I, I will tell you this, with us converting every street light to LED. We've had, I don't know how many people complain like, what the heck did you guys do? They shine down, but if they're up a little bit, they're blasting into people's houses.
They are.
Apartment complex, people are already aware of, we just did that to every single intersection on the west side. Why are they different than us? And I, I've worked at their different, their wall pack and yeah, ours basically shine down. So I think we could try a soft hand first. It's not gonna I don't know what kind of compliance we'll get. The new light sources are brutal. Try driving on the expressway at night. Dean, we were talking about this before that. People think everybody that has a SUV now has got their brights on. That's the LED lights now. You know, so we're making it worse for ourselves. Try to reason with them. Absolutely. We could try to do that. Have an outreach program, um, and report back. There's not that many complexes, but it would take a little while.
You suggest that we hold off on uh, approving this ordinance and sending it on to council till you've tried?
Attorney Crad, help me here. I, I, I don't think so.
Chairman, Chairman McGee, I, you know, I guess, uh, and I agree with Nick and then, you know, I've always been commented as saying, we'll just turn up the politeness, I guess.
Right.
Um, if, if the planning commission so wants so, we'll set up uh, meetings with those people in, in the condominium, or I'm sorry, the apartments. Um, it seems like uh, maybe the scope is a little bit narrow right now unless other people are listening and they want to contact us. But it sounds like we're now talking mostly about the apartments that are um, along the Great Oaks complex. Um, and if it's those two or three complexes, the job is certainly uh, much easier to do than if we were trying to do this citywide.
Dean, would you, would you see this as a reasonable approach at the moment here?
You, you can tell that there's a problem. Um, I, I don't know how much of an issue it is around the city. We had one caller talk about a multi-family residence that has, you know, spotlights on the side of it. Uh, there may be others that they just don't know that they can do anything about it and just live with it. Um, but yeah, I mean, stepping up the politeness is always great, but this has been a problem for years and it's been tried to uh, be addressed for years and we haven't gotten anywhere. So that's why folks are here today.
What if we put this on the first meeting in June, so to speak, for a a report back from you and the chief to see if there's any possibility of compliance before we take the next ordinance step?
We can work with that. I know we had one up chief with um, up behind uh, the bed and breakfast there uh, off of Main Street. So there, there's like, Dean, so I think people have gotten tolerant of it. But we already tied cleaners, new, brand-new building up high, got complaints already. So um, we could do our best to reach out to every situation we see. Can't hurt to ask and we could probably do that within, by June first.
Was that Christian?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've got a question. So just to, to piggyback a little bit, I think that's I, I would be in full support of what the proposal is. I think if you can sit people down and explain to them, hey, listen, either we come up with uh, with a solution in a collaborative process where you have a part and I have a part and we can cobble something together. Otherwise, you're gonna lose control of that and the city may do something that is much more onerous than what we can agree to amicably. So I think that's certainly worthwhile. Two is I have another question. Um, on page two of this proposal or with the, with the ordinance, I'm sorry. You look at letter, I guess it would be one H here. There's a strikeout. It says, um, in addition, there'll be sho- shall be no bare bulb illumination of any kind exposed to public view. That would be on page two, letter I H right there. Um, for me, when I read that, does that include what people might consider like landscaping lights, those Edison bulbs that are on a string, you know, that people have, you know, running in their backyards or something like that? Because I know those are quite common and quite prevalent. I mean, is that, would that be considered something like that or, or no?
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I, I can certainly give my, my thought on this. Now, keep in mind that, that subsection one is only for exterior lighting in the CBD B one, O one and O two districts.
Okay.
But to answer your question, because it could be that, that, that's adjacent to a residential, so it still may be applying. You know, that, that is a, a, that is absolutely, uh, you know, those string lights that, that are for patios that people are using. Um, that could be a bare bulb. I mean, that would be uh, a bare bulb because those aren't shielded. Um.
Right.
And so that's, and, and you're, you're getting to, you know, you, you, where we were talking about before is that the bare bulb is so prevalent and those lights, they do emit a fair amount of light. I'm not sure if we've ever had a complaint over the, the patio type lights. But that's one of the reasons we would suggest taking out that prohibition. Um, and, and that's where the, the lumens or the, you know, that becomes more of a, a you know, maybe applicable uh, task than a decorative party light.
Right. And, and, and Mr. Cr, I would agree with you that I think take that sentence out because rather than the form, look at the function, you know, and, and let's see. You know, you could have a bulb that could be tiny, could be very bright. And the inverse is I could have a very large bulb, but if I dim it, it's not an issue. So I would, I would much be in favor of striking that sentence to avoid that situation and looking at it as a illumination issue rather than what does the, the source of light look like from an aesthetic purpose?
Well, and look at Christmas lights.
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked about Christmas lights, huh?
Yeah.
Christmas lights all the time.
It's a slippery slope, everyone. It's, it's, it, it could go one way or the other. And so I think remove that sentence. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I like the fact that the resident, councilman, everybody said right out of the gate, you're not trying to punish the people that live in the apartments. You know, they have the right to have a lit area.
Yes.
By their comfort, but shield it at your property line so that we don't have to see residual light. There's ways to do that. Repurpose, relocate your lights and aim them towards your building.
Right, not on your property line facing in.
Exa- exactly. So I think we can have our discussion, turning up the light, hey, they didn't, they're coming down on you. They're trying to have you be respectful of other people's rights while protecting your own clients. We get that. There's gotta be other ways to look at this other than last and later that you can see for half a mile away. So we could, we could try it that way and see what kind of cooperation we get.
So are you comfortable with this, taking this and running it and then we'll look, we're gonna put it on the agenda in June?
Chief's gonna make me go with them, but that's okay. We can do that.
All right.
Well, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I guess with the conversation, now you see a little bit about what, what we are faced with.
Yes.
Uh, interpretation of what the uh, what is written and what is intended to be written. And I think that, you know, it still comes down to the, the output of the light at the property line and not necessarily that you can see it. And so an example is, you, you could see the Edison light that might, might not only put out five candela, but if you can see it, that's in violation. And so tha- that's, that's the quandary that we're put into. And so, th- that's, that's the quandary that we're put into, um, from that respect.
So let's hope that we can move this then into a more positive direction and try to figure that out after your report is made in June.
Mr. Chairman, ask a question?
Yes, please do.
So I'm not a, I'm not a lighting expert by, by any means, but, uh, if, if this ordinance was passed as written with this, um, additional section added, is it fair to assume that some of these existing multifamily buildings and commercial buildings that have lighting, if they were to, if they were to put shielding on those lights, that they would no longer meet the minimum foot candle threshold that's also required by the ordinance, so therefore they may have to add more lighting, move, add lighting.
Yeah.
Compliance, so it may be something that's a little more complicated than just putting a shield on a light.
True.
Vidya, you probably can recognize that right away, we, we might back them into a position where all of a sudden they're violating their site plan.
Commissioner Hauser had a good point, and so did Nick. Uh, sometimes we adopt ordinances with the best of intentions, but they might have unintended consequences.
Yeah.
You might try to solve one problem and just result in non-compliance with regard to another. Um, in some cases, older light fixtures, you cannot retroactively fix them with new shields, it, it simply won't anchor on. I once suggested that to a developer, and he explained to me in detail why you can't retroactively go in to shield on fixtures, not all fixtures are adaptable, so. In that case, if at all they're adaptable, they might go below the foot candles, and like Nick said, it's something about these newer bulbs, they see it as a twenty lumen bulb, but it's LED and it, it, it literally, it's like an incandescent light, it's a bright white light, uh, which than the softer yellow light.
It's, it's amazing, I know they save a lot of energy, but, uh, these LEDs are just piercing light.
They are definitely a source of light pollution, there is no doubt about that. Um, we'll have to figure out some solution to this, I will be happy to talk to the township attorney, and I will also ask my colleagues at work, I'm sure Rochester is not the first community to be facing this challenge, I'm sure we have this problem in other communities.
Yeah.
And I'm going to ask around and find out how or what techniques have been used by other communities to address this, because I'm sure homeowners are bothered by it, well, safety and security is one thing, once it starts impacting the quality of life for others, it's not fair to them either. So I'll try and find out what other communities have done, maybe there's some solution somewhere out there.
Nick and Vidya, i- in any event, uh, I don't know if you've done this, but seems like to be proactive, we need different standards in our building code now, so that, you know, we have, we have, uh, projects proposed here, complexes proposed. So that they're not able to construct these type of lights on their building top facing, you know, the property line, they should be on their property line facing their buildings.
I, I've worked with a couple building officials on this, and it, it's, and police chiefs, it's a balance where they love the light, because the crime goes down when you light up, if you can see somebody, they're not gonna do something bad. So, it's hard, it's a, it's a age old, I've been fighting this for thirty years, I'm like, I'm like, there it is. You'll light them up, so you can't, nobody's gonna do something bad, but there is ramifications, like Vidya said.
Yes.
Unintended consequence.
Okay, we will, uh, pick this up again in June when you report.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have another, a comment if you want.
Go ahead, Dean.
Um, so, to Nick's point, um, you know, you can look at it adversely too, that if people feel comfortable leaving their curtains open because they're not being blinded by things, then they will see things going on in their neighborhood. Versus if everyone at, at, at dusk shutters themselves in, nobody's gonna see anybody doing anything regardless of how much light is out there, so, um, y- you know, uh, again, I think there's ways to go about this so that we can maintain some safety, but also have a decent quality of life. I wanted to remind everybody too, that when this first, subject first came up a couple of years ago, revisited the subject, there was a couple that came in and said that they absolutely were selling their house because
Remember that.
multifamily residential that was glaring into their living room and they couldn't stand it anymore. Um, I know my neighbors are extremely frustrated, it is a quality of life issue, it, I'm being, uh, uh, pulled aside and asked about it uh, pretty regularly, obviously, especially once the winter comes, so, um, let's please try to find some way to make this.
Thank you.
We're best.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, I, I know this, this has, seems like gone on forever, uh, this issue. I understand city management, city administration, the fire chief, I mean, I know this is difficult and it's hard to quantify and things, I am all in favor of, you know, stepping up the politeness. But, but, but at the same time, I mean, I see these pictures, you know, I don't think any of us would really be happy with what's going on, and, you know, we need to do something, I mean, this is to me a ridiculous situation, that if they don't fix it, they're gonna force the city to move, and I would be in favor of moving something if they won't be decent about it. You know, we live in a city where a lot of people are close together. You know, like, I live in the part of town where the houses are right on top of each other, and, you know, we have to have some enforcement of this stuff, because someday we're all gonna have a neighbor who's not a good neighbor, I have great neighbors, I'm sure there's, you know, everybody has great neighbors, but there's times when they're not. So we need something, and, you know, just to say, well, there's nothing we can really do about it, no, I, I think we should do something, and to me, this Great Oaks example is an example of, you know, that apartment complex is, is being a bad neighbor.
They are being a bad neighbor.
And so, you know, let's try to work it out, but if they won't, then we need to do something, so let's try it. You know, let's work with them as we always do, um, but, but if they don't, then they're gonna force the city council, and I would be a supporter of moving to do something about it, because none of us would really want that in our situation a- as well, so let's try to work it out as we always do, hopefully we can. Um, but we need to give.
Given your, given, given what we're gonna try here, uh, you and Nick and Vidya, I mean, if you bring this back to us to consider in June, because you've had abject failure with attempts at cooperation, we'll be prepared to move.
Very good, and, and I think that statement, Mr. Chairman, is, will be helpful in our discussions with the, uh, with the complexes.
Okay, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You have a, we have a comment from someone.
Go right ahead.
Um, caller with the last digit six eight five, you can go ahead and speak, unmute.
Hello?
Hello, yes, Rich Power.
Hi, Rich, how are you? Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, thank you, thanks for entertaining the subject tonight, but, uh, I, I take the opposite view. I'm a senior citizen, I live alone, I appreciate the security of the brightness of the lights. Maybe it is a little bit obnoxiously bright, and, uh, I do like the thought of maybe trying to approach the apartment complexes and trying to see if you can negotiate them into getting a little bit, um, lower lumens, so it's not quite as bright, but nonetheless, uh, I really can't see how it can be possible in light of the great size here, that, that, uh, the light could be shielded to stop at the property lines, but, uh, nonetheless, um, I really appreciate the security of the brightness of the light, so not everyone is in, uh, concurrence with some of the views mentioned tonight.
Appreciate that, and, and, uh, the attorney and the staff will absolutely consider that as we move forward looking at an ordinance.
Thank you.
Thanks for calling, very much appreciated.
Thanks, everyone, bye bye.
Goodbye. Sienna, anyone else?
Just one more comment.
Uh, Dean has one comment, but nowhere, one, no one from the public.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm all for, uh, individuals, uh, lighting their, uh, properties appropriately so that they feel safe, as long as they're not infringing on their, uh, their neighbors.
Yes, very, very good point. Okay, I don't think we need to take action then, we'll just wait for a, uh, report in June, and, uh, and if necessary, we'll consider the ordinance at that time as well. Anything else on this subject?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, all right, number nine is miscellaneous, do we have any miscellany? Mr. Mayor, you always have something important for us to know.
Um, I'm sure I do, I have to think of it, uh, no, I was just gonna say, um, with having these meetings on Zoom, as the chairman said, we are going, we, we, we want to get back to City Hall, we want to have meetings. Um, but I felt, and basically, everybody in the city council felt like it was a little too soon, so we're just trying to err on the side of everybody being healthy. We're gonna, uh, look at it month to month. Um, you know, and hopefully we'll be back in chambers as soon as this gets under control, but, um, you know, it seemed, it seemed like the prudent thing, and I think this planning commission i- is really a great example of, the, I, I believe this board has been extremely effective this last year, we've had great presentations, great debate. So I was very comfortable in, you know, postponing this until, you know, everybody's safe and hopefully everybody's vaccinated and things like that, so that's really um, the genesis of that, and we're going to be looking at it month to month, and we, you know, apologize, it was a little kind of last second notification to you guys, but we were kinda scrambling at the last minute and trying to work this out, and, um, so that's where we are.
Thanks for, uh, taking, uh, you know, having concern for us, we appreciate that. I think everyone here agrees that it was too early, uh, frankly, I was surprised when I saw that the governor didn't just extend it, I thought it would have been very easy to do that.
Well, she, she, she's not able, she's not able to extend it, it was the legislature.
So that must be in the category of executive orders that she cannot address because of that one Supreme Court decision.
I think so.
Yeah, okay, very good. Any other miscellaneous comments?
I, I, I have one, sir.
Yes, please.
Just wanted to, and, and I had men, I mentioned this to Mr. Band, uh, thought I'd share it with everyone else, I, I was looking at the tide cleaners. Um, and, uh, some of the, uh, the material used, especially in the dormers, um, looked a little different than what I seem to remember being presented. Uh, right now, they've got, uh, some kind of a faux cedar shake um, in, in a uniform color on the, on the, uh, inset of the, the dormers. Um, with no other sort of architectural features. Um, kind of talked to Nick about it, and he said, yeah, and, and there's, there's some sort of wood, I don't know, scrolling or something that they're gonna do. Um, and, and that the rest of it looked pretty good, and they're gonna put the scrolling in there, and it'll look different. But I went back to the original plans, um, and I saw, uh, horizontal clapboard siding in those dormers with the wood inset, um, uh, sort of design element. And it looks a lot different as presented then, than it does now, so, um, these are the kind of things that, you know, I think, I think we all kind of get frustrated by. Um, and i- i- it's difficult for, you know, now I have to be kind of the design police and, and driver, look at these sites, um, so I just thought I'd mention it, maybe, uh, hear what, uh, administration has to say since I discussed this with them a few days ago, um, any thoughts, and what do we do moving forward?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, I appreciate Dean bringing it up, so even the tide cleaners folks have been very cooperative with us, so I assure Dean and anybody else that the plans, the good news is, the plans that were submitted and the rendering that were submitted to the billing department, Randy, our billing official, pull them out, they're exactly the same. And anything that is different than that on the the plant, the actual build out will be corrected to reflect exactly what was up there, so. They're not done, they've been made aware of it, um, and we will, uh, they don't have a final CBO, obviously, they have a temporary, so you'll be up and hand, we will make sure that we get the plan. That's for us too, and that's, that's why Sienna's job was really, so that we made sure that we got final plans through the billing official to make sure they're collaborating, and then it's our job to enforce that. We have our assurance that it will look exactly right, so then we make sure the developers know, don't take license with what you think looks like, a product that's not right, and, uh, the example was today, the Gateway Center, you know, we made right down to the details, making sure they show us what they can build. Don't just draw a pretty picture, I think it was looser than that in the past, but not anymore, so, uh.
We appreciate your diligence on that, and, uh, uh, we'll look to hear back.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, this is Christian Hauser, I've got just a quick follow-up for what Dean had said. Can you explain to me and maybe anyone else in the panel, the, the board who may not know, if there is a non-conformance, let's say, and that, I'm not making example of this building, but let's say there is a building or a structure that's been finished and it doesn't comport with what would been approved by the planning commission, what's the remedy? Can you just very briefly, you know, how does that work? I'm sure you direct them to do it, but what if they don't, and non-conformance, non-compliance?
Yeah, so the biggest tool we have when they're building, I mean, it's a certificate back out there, we can shut them down, literally. Not let them in, or if they have a temporary like tide dis- then we, we have not had anybody get in our face and say, take me to court, because it's on paper, so you would take them to court.
Fair enough, thank you, that's all you.
The, the, the most notorious one is the building at, uh, Kitty Corner or across from the Dairy Queen, the, uh, and that's just when I was coming on the planning commission, Christopher, um, they were way out of compliance. And Jeff had to get involved, I think we were near a show cause, weren't we, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, that was, uh, there was a lot of, uh, discussions on the reason for it, which is, you know, the, some of the reasons for the changes were um, okay, um, but the, the problem in that case is they didn't come back to planning commission get approval for all that, so that was, it, it did get, uh, pretty, um, pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, and sometimes what happened would be, and just quick update here is, they designed the building, then all of a sudden the billing official got the drawings that said, you can't put a window in an elevator shaft. But back then, then the billing official, then you can't do that, so then it closed in the elevator shaft, and it didn't look like the rendering. If you notice now, we, and because of due diligence of some folks in this room right here, um, that doesn't happen anymore, EP, I want to change the canopy because we found rot. We make that very clear to them, we do not have the authority, nor does the billing official make that change, you have to go back to the thing.
Yeah.
Gateway Center, so we've been pretty consistent with doing what you guys, we are consistent with doing what you guys ask, take it seriously, that, don't show something you can't deliver on. Um, and, and I don't think it's gonna be an issue ever going forward, because we're that tied into each other now between building, planning, planning commission approvals. We get documents signed, that everybody knows what they're looking at, if they want to change it, they have to come back to you guys, or whoever the proving body. Take them very seriously.
The word gets around.
It does.
Word gets around.
Can I ask one quick question?
Please do.
Since Dean brought up the, the Tide building, just driving by, I noticed that their overhang extends you know, fairly close to the road, was that some sort of, I assume they needed some sort of special exception for the setbacks there?
Which building was this?
Tide.
The, the Tide.
Yeah, I mean, it complies to all ordinances.
It does.
Yeah, there was no waiver, the waiver was given on the backside, on the property line. Um, because they built right to the property line, basically. Actually, even a property that their corporal at the top of the dormer might be an inch over that property line, so they had to get lasers out, and if it isn't, they have to cut it back an inch, so it water doesn't drop across the property, and they're willing to do that, so, you don't know that for a fact, if they're damaging, you know, you take it that serious, but the up in front, that, there's a short setback there because the ordinance doesn't have much of a setback at all, right, off of the main road.
Okay.
Again, it's in compliance with the site plan.
It was just different than, you know, most of the properties around, so I wasn't sure if that was in the ordinance, or if there had been an exception, just curious.
Yep.
Okay, any other miscellaneous discussion? Sienna, number eleven, upcoming agenda items for April twenty second.
Uh, one sec, we actually have a public comment, um.
Is that on here? Do we have any public comment?
Yep, uh, Pat?
Hello again.
Hey.
It's, uh, Pat Kane, eight seventeen, West Fourth, we're gonna make this short, because I'm tired, and I've got to get up at five AM for work tomorrow. So, you got, of course, my email, and you've got all the photographs.
Yes, you ran my printer out of me.
Well, I'll tell you, um, my photographs don't do justice to the glare, the brightness, the illumination. And that's why we have to do something, I do know of other people, and I use the word misery, they're living in misery all shuttered up. And some nights it's cozy, it's okay inside their house, and then other nights it builds up because you want to look out your window. You want to enjoy what your landscaping or your yard looks like in the evening at night. You want that little bit of openness, that breathing space. You can't have it because you've got this huge spotlight or these uh lights from other people throughout your entire house and it's blinding. It's uncomfortable. And we need to do what a lot of other cities have been doing. You cut it off at a property line. A lot of them, it's dark sky. That's it. They're done. And some cities that I had submitted before this board ever came together to planning was the fact that some cities did it. They um gave a two-year leeway to come into compliance. They were proud to announce that in one year, there was no light crossing property lines in residential at all. They also took care of their commercial without a problem. But here was the interesting fact.
Everybody went along with it, which is great.
Yeah, they had no violations. They didn't have to issue any violation notices and even their police department told them and residents told them and businesses, they had better visibility and better safety because everyone could see, but they didn't have glare. And you actually, you actually had, you could see better and more, and that's what everybody said. And their crime went down. Uh, we're kind of still backwards with this with residential. But it needs to be done. I am not, quite frankly, and you all know me, I'm not gonna give up my quality of life because of a neighbor. Intruding into the interior of my home or my property, not allowing me to enjoy it. I can't sit on my porch. We had beautiful weather this weekend. Oh, my gosh, I would have loved to have gone out there and just spent some time. I can't because of that huge light. And you can see even in a couple of my photographs, that light sometimes on all day. So all day long, you got a bright spot that's brighter than the sky in the surrounding area. And of course, you can't do anything about that. But certainly in the evenings or nights, he's got three lights through my whole house. That's ridiculous. It goes from one end all the way out the back. The blinding light on the rental, I've gone round and round with the landlord and she complies for a while and then she goes right back to it. And but currently that bulb does not even fit the fixture. It hangs below. She removed the beautiful uh light that was above the garage and has these carriage lights. Okay, so the one carriage light she knows is blocked. Keep it on all the time and keep it on bright because you know what? At least it's not on my property. It blinds you when you're pulling into our drive, but then you're okay. But it's not lighting my stone steps, my 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 only point of egress to my house. Which means I'm safer and so is every guest and every person on my property. So they also removed their back door light, their backside garage door light, which illuminated that whole area of that rental property. They removed it. So now we have this. And when that you see the one photo where you've got the big bright light to the right or to the left of it, that's a truck, a pickup truck that was like twenty feet away parked with the lights on. Look at how overly bright that is. So anyway, what I'm gonna say is, how do we advance this and how do I get these out of my house without moving like a neighbor had to do because they had it? This is unacceptable. Those lights are in my bedroom. Uh, both bedrooms, bathroom. The other neighbor's lights on Castel are still right through our property and he keeps lights on twenty-four seven. We've got an ordinance that says those your lantern lights are not going to be, what, thirty, forty-five feet in the air lighting? He lights a two-story house like a mausoleum on the backside from a single carriage light. It's that bright. It goes well beyond his thirty-five foot peak. That's ridiculous in residential.
If you look at Pat's situation here, Nick.
Not yet, but he will.
And we're talking about commercial right now, not residential.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're gonna have to come back to the.
That's a separate issue, yeah.
Yeah, but we need to get these off. And what we need to do is glare alone is an ordinance violation, I believe. This light trespass, look at that spotlight. How many of you would like that through your windows every evening? And get up in the morning at six, leave for work by seven, and that light is still through your entire house. How many of you would really enjoy spending your tax money residential while another resident is doing that? It's it's unacceptable. So we do have to do something.
Let us get this commercial thing done. And then.
Well, I'm not gonna wait three or four months for this.
No, but we should pick it up in June when we get the other one resolved.
You know, you know what? No. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna send him pictures and a letter. I'm gonna want the city to come out and measure it at the property line in line with the bulbs, especially this rental at the property line. You better measure it because I'm gonna tell you that thing is ten feet from my property line. I'd like it gone. There's no reason. It is blinding. If she can't do it, you know what? If you guys can't do it, it's gonna be a problem for me. Absolutely, it will be. I got cafe lights where a guy took down a beautiful, an okay acceptable porch light left on. He put up all these strings of cafe lights. It's like a compound. They, those cafe lights are through blinds and drapes when they're left on all day. Sometimes they're left on all week, night and day. The garage light, nonconforming building, and Nick, you were involved with that when you he you you made him cut the shingles that he actually had overhanging our property and our fence. He raised the light. That's another bedroom window. That's ridiculous.
Well, do what you said you're gonna do and send it in to Nick.
Okay, well, Nick can come over. I'll call him and he can make an arrangement to come on over. He can just walk around the block. And then I'll show you the others. Because I'll tell you what, when people leave this city because of these type of nuisances and annoyance, it's it's bad. And that's what they're doing. That's that's the problem though, and you guys aren't aware. You think, oh, they're just moving on because they're older, they're this. They're not. They're moving because they've had it. So they just say, you know what? I'm not gonna fight it anymore. I'm just leaving. And they're staying within the community. They're going outside for the same money. That's sad.
Well, we'll talk to you in May or June.
And better hope that I can have a window opener, sit on my porch for my taxes.
Very good.
Okay, if not, I'm putting up spotlights and nobody's gonna be happy. I'll talk to you guys later. And Nick, I'll call you. Goodbye. Good night, everybody.
Good night, good night. Sienna, anyone else waiting?
No.
Uh, Sienna, the next one is yours, the upcoming agenda items.
Okay, um, so we do have a second meeting in April. So far, we have the discussion regarding the concept of redevelopment redevelopment opportunity for seven oh four Woodward. Um, I believe the the design house is working on presenting that in addition to the consideration of the addition of more portable classrooms for the Saint John Lutheran Church and School. So they will be here. Um, also, uh, what's not on here, but Mr. Snyder, the one who actually did the brownstones at twelve oh five May.
Yes.
He he actually is working on something else at four oh seven. Um, Main Street, I think it's the sports memorabilia place now, um, but he should be bringing something forward for that.
Okay, very good. So uh, we begin another busy period.
Yes.
Okay, that's very good. All right, uh, the next item is adjourned. I I would ask if anyone else has any other business for the planning commission? Well, the time is nine thirty-eight and we will consider this meeting adjourned. And uh, we will see you uh at our next meeting in uh later April. Good night.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Night.